Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
At 5:39 PM. Mr. Pratt, did you get your usual of the American flag first to do? A virtual pledge of allegiance? Chris?
Yeah, I'm gonna call it up. See it?
Yep.
No.
Oh, usually I nominate someone to do this, but I guess I'll start. My pledge of allegiance. Of the United States of America.
And to the repelled like which stands.
One nation under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Now I have to, I need another screen. I need to quit, keep switching back to see the agenda here. Adjustments to the agenda.
Yeah, I guess I think we should put off board goals again, but I think at some point we should really maybe even meet separately than our twice a month to actually go over those and so we can actually get them off of the future agendas.
Okay, maybe, um, maybe next meeting we can review the ones that we have. And then decide if we decide if we need to modify or adjust them when we.
Yeah, I think I think it'll just be going over them and you know, whatever we can do to get them off the agenda. I know we worked on them last year and you know, I think it's most of its common sense is just putting words around it. So.
Yeah, where we didn't get them filled out was to the the budget and the collaborate, which are pretty straightforward. So yeah, we could, we can start reviewing them again next meeting.
Do we know where those are located or do we have to search back through the minutes?
Josh put them together in a, in a document at one point. I think we can find them and I think we can find them pretty quick. I think they're in a matrix somewhere quite ease, quite, quite accessible.
I'll put that on my to do list for next time.
Review and approve board minutes for March 16th, 2020.
That's supposed to be April 6th.
You're probably right.
Yeah, I think it's April 6th.
So shall we review and approve the board minutes for April 6th, 2020?
I make a motion that we approve the board minutes for April 6th.
Any discussion?
Uh, under the corrections. They have George Benson was appointed to the CIP committee, should say Jason Benson. That was number two.
Yeah, we were, we corrected it last time and it still isn't.
You're a month behind Jason.
Okay, thanks. We're good then. If we got that updated.
Corrections, no, but it still says George Benson on.
It still says.
So we still need to correct that to Jason Benson.
Josh, are you there?
Yeah, the minutes don't actually get corrected. They get submitted and then they're corrected on the next set of minutes under approval of the minutes and corrections is really the only way that corrections get documented.
Yeah, but Josh, it's still incorrect on the minutes for the six.
Right. I can't, I can't go back and actually edit the minutes. The minutes never get edited. They just, it's a draft.
Priscilla, hang on. Let him finish.
When we corrected it, if you look at B, it should say Jason Benson was appointed to the SIP committee. Those are your corrections.
Yeah, he understands that. He's gonna make the corrections.
Priscilla, hang on a second. Hang on a second. Priscilla, it's under number two, under corrections. Cause we corrected it last month, uh, last meeting. So it's actually under number two where it says corrections. So he, he did correct it.
But it, but it wasn't corrected.
Yes, it was. Under corrections, it's been corrected. That's what Josh was trying to say.
But it's not. That's what I'm saying.
Outside of the minutes, it's been corrected and it will be updated.
Yeah, Priscilla.
But it's wrong in the, the April 6th minutes.
Yeah, there are static, the static.
Wrong back in on March 16th. It was wrong. So last time we corrected it, the correction was Jason Benson was appointed to the SIP committee. However, when it's typed on here, Josh has once again typed it as George Benson.
Yep, yep, you're right. Okay, I see that now.
Okay, I went off the video or some, so I'm, I'm sorry, but I'll, I'll, so who was, who is, it's Jason Benson is on SIP, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we have too many Jasons. Let's just change Jason Benson's name to George and we'll be all set.
I apologize, uh, apologize about the error and the miscommunication, Priscilla.
No problem.
It's okay.
So do I have a motion? I had a motion from Priscilla. Correct. Okay. Discussion, any further discussion, any further corrections? Anyone sees?
No.
Okay, all are in favor of approving the minutes as presented and as corrected. Please say aye. Start with George.
Aye.
Smith, not Benson. Priscilla?
Aye, Priscilla.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
Jason Benson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Get that, George, Josh?
Got it.
Communication and public comments. Do we have any communication and public comments from any board members or any of the public that happens to be out there in the world watching, listening?
I see nothing in the chat.
We have any public? Just Mr. Clark, I guess. Policies, none. Reports, superintendent? Report.
All right, uh, it's an update since the last time. We have weekly meetings with the Secretary of Education as well as the regional group of superintendents. So as you all know, the governor has extended the stay at home order until May 15th. On May 8th is the deadline for when the Secretary of Education recommend to the governor in regards to the plan to, um, if he feels we should stay closed or open back up. The overall sentiment for that is pretty overwhelming that chances are of us going back to school and seeing the inside of these buildings for this year is, is, um, that probability is very low. Um, one of the other decisions that they're gonna make too is they haven't decided yet on spring sports, whether or not those will take place. And that will also happen on or before May 8th. Like I said, I don't anticipate that happening either. We've started to get further guidance for pre K in the new.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So I thought that the decision that already may have been made that we wouldn't go be going back into school this year.
Well, it was, but it kind of flip flopped a little bit in regards to they're gonna look at it one last time.
Okay.
Um, they keep going back and revisiting it. Right now, the the Secretary of French will make the recommendation to the, his recommendation to the governor no later than May 8th.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Pratt.
Cause they, yeah, they, what they want to do is they, the reason they're looking at it is again, because they, they really want to try to, you know, um, keep an open mind in regard to graduations and the celebrations at the end of the year. So that's why they're looking at it again. Question?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Um, I, I'm a believer that the classroom is also on the athletic field and that's part of the classroom. So did you just say that there's probably not going to be any spring sports?
Correct.
So.
As of right now, there's no spring sports. They're gonna revisit that no later than May 8th.
Right. Okay. I thought it was the April 30th, but what, what happens to those, uh, senior athletes? Would they get another year eligibility?
Um, the VPA, the Vermont Principals Association, they haven't commented that far down the road at all yet. So we don't know. If it's seniors, probably not. If seniors, probably not. Yeah, if seniors, probably not because they'll be moving on to the next level. Um, but you know, it trickles down and stuff, but that's come up a bunch of times and you know, that's the same thing for college athletes as well in the athletics. Kids are, all students are losing out on a lot this year based on the current situation. And I don't think any, right now they don't really have any real answers to how they're going to amend that. So.
Let's hopefully they have some sports.
Pre K guidance. Um, we finally started to get some pre K guidance in regards to the continuity of education needs. There we, um, they're saying for economic stability, that means we need to still pay our private K providers that are providing the distant learning opportunities for these kids. And, um, what I've done is I've, I've asked for a copy of all the private providers continuity of a learning plan. So we can make sure that, um, if we're parenting them, we know exactly their plan moving forward. Um, and then for the pre K, they're saying they're really gonna be focusing on moving forward, the focus in the emotional and social support for students in pre K. Um, it's not, the 10 hours is not the focus. It's really the socially emotional. So you know, some of you knows that, you know, people are requiring, if they want, they can get up to 10 hours of pre K right now. It's, um, the 10 hours isn't in stone. It's more about making sure that, you know, we're checking in and making sure that we're assisting in the socially emotional wellbeing of the families and the students. In addition to that, we've got quite a bit of information surrounding the CARES Act. I'm just gonna run through it real quick. Elementary and secondary schools emergency relief fund, the amelany and secondary schools, um, fund provides flexibility funds to state education agencies in school districts to support an extra cost associated with the COVID-19 preparations. Um, so what that means is right now, um, in the CARES Act that Vermont gets about 13 billion. Vermont's share is around 31 million. Um, and we, and, um, how that's gonna be distributed is it's very similar to how consolidated federal funds are distributed right now. And so they're gonna follow that kind of weighted distribution and how much we get is probably gonna be based, what they're saying is 80% of our consolidated federal funds money. So the governor and the federal money is about, is a what'd they say, 3 billion national and 4.4 million for Vermont funds? And that's the, uh, that's different than the CARES Act. This is additional money that the Fed they're filtering through the governor's office and he has discretion on how that, um, 4.4 million dollars going to Vermont is spent. As far as the CARES Act money, AOE can retain up to 10% of that CARES Act money for the fall. So they have that leeway. Let's see, 90% of these funds will go to LEAs with 10% reserved for SEA level activities. Funds will be allocated to the state and LEAs based upon their most recent years, title one allocations, like I just spoke about. Um, monies must be obligated by the LEAs by September 30th, 2021. That means we have to spend it by September 30th of 2021. Not 2020. It is possible that the funds, um, will come with an additional 12 month under the amendments. However, we don't know at this time. And they must award the, um, the funds to the LEAs within one year of the federal assurance of the funds. So yeah, the next steps is will, the AOE will be developing a streamlined application process. And we expect to see, um, receive funding by the, the middle of May. Um, we spoke a little bit about the governor's emergency education relief fund. Um, like I said, it's at 4.4 million, provides emergency support through grants to LEAs filtered through the governor's office and it provides emergency support through grants to not just, um, public schools, but also colleges as well. So it's not a large chunk of money. But you keep in mind that 4.4 million dollars is not just for public K through 12, it's for private and public, and that goes all the way up to the college levels. Um, special education impact, sped costs will be increased due to, um, compensatory services for students now and when they return. And some of the talk is, is that they suggest that maybe CARES Act revenues are used for special education costs in case the reimbursement doesn't cover for all of it. And that's just one of the things they're putting out there. They're not saying we have to do that. They're just saying, um, giving us suggestions in regards to, um, special ed spending. We also spoke a little, Secretary French, when we met with them, did speak a little bit about the collective bargaining. Um, he does not know how it will be impacted or to how to address the increase in costs, especially when 82% of the costs are staff related. So he said, you know, he sees more that the collective bargaining for FY21 that, um, everything will pretty much be on the table for negotiations in 2021. The overall revenue picture is uncertain. Feds will not allow us to use CARES Act as a revenue reporting on ed funds. So that, you know, I think that was important for us to know that even though, um, we are getting money, we can't report it as revenue as we do with some of the other, um, grants that we get. And, um, they said we should anticipate a tax increase for 2021. Um, we shouldn't, we should cut back on spending and create a surplus buffer to assist the following years to reduce the tax burden. So, um, that's pretty much the most recent update as of last Thursday regards to the CARES Act, special education and, um, so any questions?
Priscilla?
I'm fine. No, it's just. I was checking to see whether I was on mute or on the other and I had to touch the screen. Sorry.
That's okay.
I, I think the superintendent covered it pretty well.
So anybody have any questions for Mr. Pratt? Shall we hear the principal report, principals reports? We'll start with Ms. Bukowski today.
All right. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Um, excuse me. So I'll start out with, uh, we are ready for our transition to continuity of learning, which we will begin on April 22nd. Um, I sent out an email to all BFMS families on Friday, which included the student schedule and the expectations for decorum and, you know, muting yourself, showing up on time, all of those type of expectations that we would have for students attending classes. Today I met with all my teachers in small groups to check in with them. We reviewed the schedule. We talked about taking attendance, how that's gonna go. Um, our expectations and, um, what a reviewing again, you know, for students that we see that aren't participating. Our steps and how we will follow through with that. Um, tomorrow we're gonna have a kickoff meeting with all the students by grade level where we'll review the schedule and the expectations with them. We have those set up for starting at eight in the morning and running through about nine 15 going by grade level. We're also gonna send out a robo call tomorrow to all families, reminding them that on Wednesday, we begin the schedule where students are will have four online classes from 8:30 to 10:30 in 30 minute blocks. Um, Friday we'll have our ulterior meeting. Um, as we normally would have, we'll do it by grade levels and then we'll have an advisory and on Friday, teachers have office hours for students to check in, ask questions, parents, et cetera. Our AIM program will also be starting on Wednesday. And that's our after school program and there are seven virtual clubs that will be taking place. Right now there's 35 students signed up. They will run from two to three o'clock. And the clubs are hour of code, podcast and storytelling, a nature club, yearbook, math games, a book club and snack and study. And so, um, hopefully we'll be able to extend that and actually add a, some more classes, an additional hour. We're also finalizing the procedures for having our, um, parents drop off the student work packets that we handed out a few weeks ago. We're gonna have that during meal distribution on Wednesday and Friday. And speaking of meals, we continue, we're a meal distribution site and we average between 170 to 200 pickups. Um, every time I'm there on Fridays, um, Mr. Quadro is there on Wednesdays, so we spread ourselves out. And then, um, last Wednesday I attended a Zoom middle school principals meeting from the AOE. Uh, where I was able to hear and network with several of the other Vermont middle school principals. We shared um, how we're meeting the needs of our students, not only academically, but socially and emotionally during this difficult time. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any question? George?
I got a question and it, it may be more, um, uh, for Mr. Pratt as well. Could you guys, well, I guess just one or the other, Chris, I guess. Could you, um, clarify the expectations? The academic expectations of the kids, meaning uh, at the end of this school year, are we expecting them maintain or to continue to grow? Um, what is that? What does the expectation for them look like?
Um, well, the expectation is that, um, the AOE has been clear saying, there's no way that it's going to be a an even trade off in regards to going from six hours a day to instruction to three hours of instruction. What it looks like is that we're trying to provide students with a robust education, not maintaining, but continue to move them forward. And, um, responsible for taking attendance and making sure that we try to find ways to continue to have them move forward in education. It's not set up, the, the continuity of learning plan is not set up to maintain current education. It's to move forward with continued education. Um, so that's why the, it's pretty detailed. It's why the, the, the plan that we submitted to the state is over 40 pages long. Cause we gotta cover every aspect of it. So yeah, it's not, it, it was when we first started to maintain education. Now it's for long-term learning. So um, you know, we are responsible for assessing the kids. But the state also knows that there's no way it's gonna be, you're trading six hours of learning for three hours of learning.
And how are we gonna gauge that?
Well, we're gauging that through, um, you know, still do local assessments and it does help that we're, we've spent a lot of time on proficiency based learning where a lot of that assessment can be done, um, with teachers, one-on-one with students through the various platforms of either Google Hangout or Zoom. I mean, so we also, um, you know, right now we're not, you know, we, we have other assessments that we can do to look at student growth based on the different, um, platforms and learning tools that we have that are online. And I think it looks different right now for every grade level because we're not able to access our, you know, maps testing that we usually do within the buildings. But your principals can, um, elaborate a little bit more on the specifics on how the, um, assessing the work and what the students are doing.
Any more questions for Ms. Bukowski? No, that one wasn't for her.
Sorry. My mind is in middle school right now. That's all.
Okay.
For obvious reasons.
Moving along, Mr. Nemlich.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Um, today we handed out devices to all the students. So that means kindergartners received iPads and first through fourth received Chromebooks. Um, we also took in packets back from the families, library books, raffle tickets, a number of things. But all, all of our equipment now is out and in place and tomorrow we'll start completely with, with the new plan, the new distance learning plan. Um, I have a staff meeting tomorrow afternoon. We'll double check and see how students did with sort of logging in for the day. We'll also review our attendance procedures. And, uh, let's see, I, I also attended a statewide elementary principals meeting online and, um, you know, one of the things that was discussed was recognizing and I think this is really important to recognize that, you know, the whole state is, is switching to remote learning or to online learning. And that's a, that's a heck of a challenge. It's even more of a challenge when you consider the, uh, the constraints that we're all working under. So I think it's really important that we appreciate the efforts of the teachers because I know my teachers, even though it was vacation last week, not a single one of them took a day off. I'm sure of that. They were busy building things online and getting ready for tomorrow. Other than that, you know, uh, we'll, we'll see how this week goes. Um, at the end of this week, we have, uh, grade level meetings, which will be another chance for us to take a look and see how the week went. And I'm sure we'll learn a lot. Um, after these first few days, um, you know, uh, we're putting very young children online. And, um, that, that just brings a whole lot of challenges. So um, it will take a while to work out some of the bugs, but, um, I'm sure after a week or two, we'll be, uh, rolling right along. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Priscilla?
Um, yeah, Keith, how do you think your teachers are doing, um, in their mental awareness and their situation?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, this is a big strain on them. There's a lot of extra, you know, preparation stuff that has to go in over what the classroom was and everything else. And I'm just wondering how they're dealing with it. If you feel that, that they're all okay or they're really getting.
I, I think, I think it depends, you know, um, I think a lot of it is up and down. They, they, um, they learned something new and apply it. And, uh, then if they hit a wall, then it, you know, they deal with the same frustrations that, you know, anybody deals with when it comes to technology. I mean, what, what they're trying to set up at times is, is pretty tricky. Google, uh, Classroom is, um, not without its little quirks for sure. So, and, and like I said, it's all new. This is not something that anybody said, hey, I wanna, I wanna sign up and be an online teacher. You know, this is, this is a, a lot of new learning by everybody. So, but I think in, in general, we, you know, we had a, um, we took advantage of, uh, the fact that we were allowed to hold a parade, which we did last Wednesday. And that was, uh, that was great for, um, spirit on both sides, quite honestly. It might've done actually more for the staff than it did for the kids. Um, but we, we went through town. It took about an hour to drive through town. Um, and got a chance to see a lot of students and a lot of families. I think it was really appreciated. So, um, no, thanks for asking, Priscilla. It's, it's a really important question.
It, it's just that we talk so much about, you know, the turmoil for the students and all of that. But the turmoil for the teachers and the parents and them, they're not seeing their students. You're not able to, you know, hold and do things that you do at an elementary level. So it can be really frustrating.
Yeah. The other, the other challenge to think about is those, those teachers that have, um, kids at home. You know, their own children. I have, I have a third grade teacher who has, uh, three little boys under her feet and she's basically operating as a single parent right now. So, yeah, it's a huge challenge.
If you think of anything that the board can do to, to support in, in any way, that also goes for Karen, yours, although your kids are a little older, so they're a little bit more used to the technology than the little ones. But if you think of anything that we can do to help out, let us know.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Nemlich? Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Hello, everyone. I hope you all are well. Um, we had a very successful device and packet pickup today. Um, everyone came to get their things and it went very smoothly. The week prior to, to vacation, um, if you recall, I had said we started our online just with the morning excuse me, morning meetings to get, um, kids and families used to that environment. And so this week we'll begin our shift as, uh, Keith and Karen pointed out as well to, um, more online learning within Google Classroom, uh, combined with some packet work. Uh, prior to, uh, today, all teachers sent out emails to all of our families that outline the expectations, the new expectations. Prior to today, all teachers sent out emails to all of our families that outline the expectations, the new expectations, the time expected for assignments, et cetera, and the parameters of that work. I'll say with our packets today, just a shout out to our PTO again, they contributed some supplies for all kids, crayons and watercolor paints, which was really nice to be able to include in some of the packets for kids. Again, I'll say our teachers have done a tremendous job rising to the challenge and making the shift to e-learning. Certainly new for many of them. And now that they're a hundred percent feet wet, they are, they're doing great with it and three cheers to them for that. We have set up, that's happening on a regular basis, weekly staff meetings, team meetings. The specialists and grade level team meetings will begin meeting this week. And Missy and Lynn are coordinating those, but I'm doing the weekly staff and team meetings. And our, like Karen mentioned, our meal distribution site, it's a smooth operation. Big shout out to Linda and Lori in the kitchen and all the volunteers that make that possible. I'm there on Mondays and it is, it's really amazing what, what, what we're able to do for families in the community. And I also, I plan to attend the statewide, there were two options for the meeting for elementary principals, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, and I plan to attend the one on the twenty-fourth. Any questions?
Priscilla?
Again, Laura, um, the, basically the same thing how yours are, your teachers are feeling about this, this. I'm particularly thinking about Kate, who has let us know that she's retiring and to have to go out this way. And if there's anything we can do to support that way. So, but do you see anything that really stands out to you that maybe we could help with?
Um, I think, you know, making the transition to the online environment, our tech folks have been awesome. Just simply awesome, very, very reachable, approachable, willing to support me and teachers in any way that they can. And teachers are utilizing that, that service. So thank you, Priscilla, for, for asking. And I also agree, I feel so bad for Kate, you know, this being her last year of teaching and, and this is how it ends. Well, we're going to do something special though.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Ms. Hazard? Business office. Chris, do you have any financials for us?
No, they're wrapping up the audits right now. They're just finishing up. I was on emails prior, just to getting on, that's why I was late, is going back with our HR Smith in regards to reconcile in all two thousand nineteen. So I'm hoping by the end of this week, all reconciliations are done and hopefully by the end of the following week, if not the next, audits will be done. Because I'm just as curious and just as anxious to get all this to you.
Do, do you have any updates for us on where we are with budget for this fiscal year at this point?
Nope, I won't know until they finish their reconciliations. Like I said, they're about half, they're doing the final touches to that. So I'm anticipating I'll have something by Friday.
And that's.
That's the reconciliations for this year, the ones.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, and they're gonna, soon as they're done with two thousand nineteen, they said getting two thousand twenty done is not going to be as strenuous because we're already, it's in the, the system, they're working with one system rather than going back between working with two systems. So, they can't start twenty until nineteen is done. So they're just wrapping up nineteen now. And I've asked the question right now, they're not willing to, you know, they can't say with any definitively where any of the district stands in regards to finances.
So we used to get regular reports from the business office on, on where we were financially currently. I was wondering if we did. I was hoping we might see that during this meeting. Is there a way that you or Teresa or someone could start pulling that together for us?
And Teresa's starting to pull some of it together. She did it for a while, but yeah, now that she, she hasn't, she has enough from the, from the auditing firm to stop pulling these together. And that's what she's working on right now. I wanted to have one for the Rockingham Board tonight. They were able to get one to the, um, the Athens Grafton Westminster Board. But she wasn't able to, to pull it off.
Okay. And that's current status is what I'm talking about, not like back or whatever, just, okay.
Yep.
And once that, once they get to that point, will we then be getting them monthly like we used to?
Yes. Yep. And it's, and I'm, I'm not going to wait till the next board meeting to send out where we currently are. As soon as I get that, I'm going to send it off in an email to all of you guys, going to detachment. So you can take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pratt regarding the business office?
Yeah, I do. Jason Terry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pratt, I, I think that is a, well, thank you for getting that done, but I, I think going forward, it's going to be huge to see the actuals so that we can continue to improve. Because as you said earlier, they're recommending cutting. So we really got to go through everything with a fine tooth comb. So it's very important we get those timely.
Thank you. It's very important that, you know, it's, you guys haven't had that for such a long time. It's very important that you get the actuals. You get the expenditures, you get the whole big picture. And that's what I'm trying to get from the business office with everything going on and trying to, so they can get the information to the auditors, so they can get everything to you and me. So we can see what is going on in regards to the financials because that, that's the mess we're in right now. We, we have been in.
Well, good. It's good effects. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions regarding the business office? WNESU Board, I don't think there's been a board meeting since we last met. So I don't know if there's any updates from there. Mr. Clark, you are with us if you have any comments or updates?
No updates, Rick. I believe you may have an item to deal with regarding early retirements later in the meeting.
Yep, that will be under upcoming considerations for twenty twenty-one. Uh, committees, I don't think we have any committee reports from anyone. Transportation, who's on the transportation committee? There's not much of that right now. So I guess there's probably not much there.
No, there's nothing really going on with any of the committees right now.
Okay.
Saving money? Awesome.
Are we, are we saving money right now?
Yeah.
Probably not by delivering food everywhere.
No, because we still have to pay all our workers because of the governor's interesting decree.
Great.
And we're still running the buses to deliver food.
Yep.
Oh.
Um, so under number eight, even though we tabled that for today, I did pull up the last document with the last stuff that we had. And I shared that with everyone on the board, Josh and Mr. Pratt, so that we can, everyone, if everyone can take a minute to review it, we can pick up, we can at least give it a once. Uh, uh, it won't be the first read for some of us, but next meeting, we can do a first read of the existing document and see where we want, what, if there, what we want to do with that. Considerations for the rest of the school year. It sounds like things are back to being up in the air as far as the schools reopening. Chris, principals, let us know if there's anything that you think that we need to do planning wise to get ready if that happens. If you think it's going to be easy, seamless, complicated, difficult, whatever. Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss under considerations for the ongoing school year? If not, upcoming considerations for twenty twenty-one. So, you know, as we were just advised by Mr. Pratt, we're being directed to figure out how to cut some costs and save some costs. I think we're going to have to have a hard look at a lot of things. Mr. Terry, you brought up sports. That's something we may have to consider, how we can make more affordable for the taxpayers. Get creative with that. One of the topics that has come up is reopening the early retirement incentive for the, for teachers.
Can we talk about, can we talk about the positions for next year first?
Which positions for next year?
The ones that we were going to add, the foreign language one, where are we on that? And the behavioral.
Yes. If you want to ask that question first, go for it.
Yeah, would you?
Ms. Bukowski?
Thing we're going to put in, or is it something we're going to wait a year?
Right now, we're waiting a year. I am not going to pursue hiring anybody for that position based on a conversation I had with Chris Pratt, with Superintendent Pratt last Thursday, I believe.
And then the behavioral was at which school?
Saxon River.
Ms. Hazard, would you like to speak to that one?
You sure can. So that's specific to an individual student. And the original request was for a BI through HCRS. At this time, and we have a meeting this week, again, for this individual student. But at this time, I believe that we are going to move forward with the situation that we currently have, which is a para one-to-one that will be trained via the, the new training that Andy is going to implement with some paras. So the cost will be reduced because a BI costs more than a para.
Okay, great. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Karen.
So there was a, there's been, the executive committee met and discussed the idea of offering to extend the, or re-implement the retirement incentive for teachers. We modified it, the idea, the idea, because we will have to vote on this, someone will have to present a motion. The idea of changing it from the seventy-five hundred dollar incentive to a ten thousand dollar incentive, the, for teachers with fifteen years or more service in the district who are in the four oh three B plan. Seventy-five hundred dollars would be paid out in this August and the other twenty-five hundred would be paid out in the twenty-one, twenty-two August of that year. So does anyone have any? We would open it up for pre-discussion if anyone has any questions on that.
Is that the motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
No, that's not the motion.
Then you have that motion before.
Have to have a motion first, I think. I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Terry? Jason's end up first.
So is, is, so if somebody retires, taking early retirement.
We have to have a discussion after the motion. So let me make the motion first.
Okay.
Okay. I would make a motion that we follow the incentive of the, that's currently in the contract to offer the teachers the seventy-five hundred that is in there. Because that's what the contract felt was important. And I do not see putting off for a full year, paying an extra amount of money when the teachers aren't even working in our district. I think that incentive will be enough. If the teacher's considering retiring, then she would be. So that's my motion.
So I'm going to take, I'm going to take, I'm going to take a little point of order with your statement, Priscilla, and I take quite offense. I take offense at you saying that our teachers are not even working in the district. That is, I can't believe that you.
They wouldn't be next year. They wouldn't be next year.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying they're not now.
Okay.
They, they were, would not be next year. So my motion is that we stick with the seventy-five hundred that is in our current budget. And we do pay that for any teacher that does want to retire early because the board has always been able to approve that anyway, since they are doing that. Since we already have a retirement too, that would, and she's getting that, that's the amount we've approved. That is in keeping with hers as well.
So I would like to note and make a friendly amendment, perhaps that the WNU ESU or whatever approved the ten thousand dollars. And I think that it would be a little bit unfair to teachers in other districts to possibly get more than it would be for teachers in our district.
Point of order, I do not agree to a friendly amendment.
Well, we can still have a regular amendment.
You can after, but this is the one I've made.
You can amend it now. But he has to take a vote on that amendment.
There are discussions here somewhere?
Yeah, discussion now, George. Priscilla, give George a chance to speak, please.
I will. Thank you.
George?
Um, so if, let's just say that somebody did decide to retire early, regardless of the financial benefit involved in that, it's kind of, it doesn't matter. We're still going to, I'm assuming that we're going to want to possibly rehire somebody. Is that, so this is somebody with fifteen years of service. What, what is the, what is the difference in the pay scale look like for someone new coming in? Versus somebody who's been in the, in the, the system for fifteen years or whatever the requirement is. What does that, what does that look like? Does anybody have an idea?
Twenty to thirty thousand dollars depending on the teacher and the role and, and what the person coming in would have.
It's much more than that.
It's much more than that?
The savings or the difference?
No, 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 the cost of it's much more than that.
I'm saying.
The difference between, so.
I'm assuming that somebody leaving is going to be making more than somebody coming in. Maybe that's a false assumption.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the teacher roster right now and a teacher at step fifteen is making a little over sixty-three thousand dollars and a teacher at step five is making forty-two, seven. So about twenty thousand dollars. So if we gave a ten thousand dollar incentive, we'd still see a ten thousand dollar savings if we replace that teacher.
Rick, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
I need to hand over the host to you because I have to leave and start the high school meeting.
Okay.
So I'm just going to give you full host privileges.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Everyone, I hope everyone has a good evening.
I want to be part of that one too.
Mr. Terry?
So if, if we're going to save ten thousand, does the teacher get any part of their salary also? Would we have to pay for that as well?
No, I don't believe so.
What about unemployment or unemployment insurance?
They retired.
Okay. Just, just want to make sure. So basically we're going to save ten, ten thousand per teacher.
Over a two-year period.
Understood.
And that is.
Over a three-year period? Is that what you said?
Over a two-year period because it'd be seventy-five hundred, if it was ten thousand. Yeah, actually it would be over a longer period. I have to do the math to see how long it would take someone to get up there. So.
Rick, while you're doing that, can I comment?
Yes. I'm not doing the math right now.
Uh, okay. That depends on what level you hire them at. There have been, that have come in and are hired at the higher steps, even the higher steps with masters, that you could be paying out more than a current teacher even. So that's an estimate. Also, you're taking away a teacher possibly, though I don't believe a teacher's going to, going to take it unless they've already decided to retire. And if they've already decided to retire, there's no point in paying them the extra anyway. It's the seventy-five hundred is what has been in there. But there's, you're going to take away the teacher that the student has been used to and that they're expecting to see when they go back, some of them. And so that those are, you know, there's your possibility. And so that those are, you know, there's your possibility, which is also a worrisome thing because in this turmoil, we want our stu, our things to be as stable as we can. We've already lost one teacher. So we know that, we should know, and I'm assuming that that's, would be the case, that we can't get along with any less teachers than what are currently under contract or will be under contract.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Jason Benson, I think I can tell by your voices now because like, my screen is small enough, I couldn't see. Go ahead, sir.
Jason Terry.
Oh, Jason Terry, sorry.
That also means we don't have to hire a replacement teacher as well, correct?
If, that would depend on the position and how else we can, the, the principals and the administration could structure their staff.
So I mean, maybe, um, maybe one teacher can teach multiple subjects. I, I don't know, but in my line of work, you need to be able to multitask, so maybe that's an option.
It is certainly an option. There are, there are.
Certified.
George?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that regardless of where this thing lands, it, it would be voluntary, it'd be a voluntary action on the, the part of the teacher. Regardless of the amount of money or whatnot, it wouldn't be something that the board or anybody else is taking. It's, it would be a, I just wanted to point that out. It'd be a voluntary act.
Very, very true. And so one of the, there's, there was, there are multiple facets to this. One of it is, one of the ideas that was put out for a reason for doing this was teachers who, you know, Priscilla pointed out, those who are gonna retire are already gonna retire. There may be some out there who are a little nervous about returning to the classroom in the fall, you know, older teachers perhaps that with everything that has gone on. And this, you know, this may be just, just enough or just reopening this may be enough to let them know. It also gives them the, you know, gives them incentive to let us know before September, you know, before August fifteenth rolls around and they're like, I really don't want to go back. George?
Uh, do we have an idea of how many people are even, how many of the teachers are even eligible?
If I read the roster correctly today, there's twenty-one teachers in our district that are eligible. If I read it correctly, and those are just regular ed teachers. Actually, I don't know if we, there's an age limit on it. Priscilla, do you remember if there was an age limit on the original one?
There is, there is in the original, but we can waive that.
So as far as years of service, there were twenty-one teachers. I'm not sure how many of them are age eligible.
There was, it was a limit of twenty years in, in the current one because if you get below twenty years, that teacher is not gonna get enough in retirement money to really make it truly worthwhile. Because if you figure fifteen years of service and they're, they're running maybe forty-five at the most, they're going to be, they're gonna be losing portions of it every year because of the way the new current system is set up. Unless they're a second year, a second career person.
Rick, this is Chris again. I'm sorry. I don't wanna, I don't wanna rush you guys along, but I, but I guess I cannot start two meetings on one platform.
Really?
So, even though I handed host things over to you, so, I mean, I already let the other board members know that we're running late, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Can you start the other one on Google Meet or?
No, it's already set up for Zoom.
Okay.
But, I mean, they already know. I'm just putting it out there.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We've had some discussion. I don't know if the chair can actually ask for an amendment, but there, there is the idea of the amendment to make it the same, at least the same as the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary District, which was for ten thousand. There was also, and to make it fair to the teachers who took it last year, there was the idea of, of making the other twenty-five hundred retroactive to them. I'm just gonna throw that out there. If someone wants to make that amendment or if someone wants to call. Normally, we don't call a vote. We just have discussion, but if someone wants to make that amendment, I would listen to it.
So right now, can you repeat the motion that's on the floor right now? Priscilla?
I moved that we follow the guidelines of the amount of money that's in the current contract because I didn't, do not feel that the additional will cause more people to want to retire and that keeps it in keeping with the contract. We don't have to do a side agreement. And the other boards can also vote on this that same way.
And so you're, what you're proposing is also the keeping with the twenty years and not the fifteen?
No, and we, we can say and waive the, the year requirement.
We need to say that and be very clear. So you are proposing that we
Keep the money amount.
CBA agreement that was, the, the, the early retirement CBA agreement as written last year with an adjustment for fifteen years of service.
Yes. Let's call the motion.
I had. All in favor?
Aye. Priscilla?
Jason Terry?
Aye.
George Smith?
Hi.
Jason Benson?
Aye.
So it goes, so there we have a approved motion for seventy-five hundred dollars with for those with fifteen years of service. The one thing that we didn't put in, I don't know if we need to redo this, was when they need to give it to us by.
What is their current?
It was October first, and so I know the other boards were saying May fifteenth.
Yeah, I don't think we need a time, honestly. It was, you know, because they can apply at any time up to the end of the year, but do you wanna make?
I think we'd like to know sooner than later so we can do decision making. Because otherwise, it doesn't help us. If, if we say May fifteenth, then the teachers and principals and administration can start planning.
When are contracts due?
When are they due?
Contracts are due by, let me see, I gave them thirty days, so I believe it's.
May fifteenth.
Yeah.
Same thing.
So is that what you'd like is May fifteenth?
Do we have two board members back there, Priscilla?
Uh, Dave's back here.
Oh, is he consulting or is he a board member?
He's not a board member. He's public.
Just checking.
Because he just walked in the room.
Okay.
Sorry. And this is an executive session. If it was executive session, I would have moved. So do you want a motion for May fifteenth? I will move that we, I will ma, I move that we do the extensions as of, to be in by May fifteenth.
Any discussion on that from anyone else?
Not the extensions, but the incentives.
Mr. Terry?
No discussion.
Do you care to vote? Let's call the vote then. I mean, Mr. Terry?
Yeah, I'll move.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
So the agreement, the early retirement incentive will have a deadline of May fifteenth. So, mister, we have a, a agenda item for how can the Rockingham School Board influence the education tax system in order to be respectful of the Bellows Falls Union High School trying to get their meeting going? Does anyone mind if we table that till the next meeting for discussion?
Uh, no, but I, I definitely want to make sure we take a hard look at the landlords increasing the landlord tax, which will trickle down to the renters. Forty-four percent of the population is rental. So I want to make sure that that's, we got.
So, so we, so that, the, the, this agenda item is to help us figure out how we can help to influence that. We don't set the tax rate or do any of that, so it's, 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 we need to start digging in to see how we, if we want to work towards that, how does, how do we influence that?
Right. So I think we gotta go in front of the select board, so.
Okay.
And I'll be willing to do that.
Okay, um, appointments, if any, I don't believe we have any directors' comments, if they could be brief, those
I got one.
High school would appreciate it. George?
Going forward, it seems that Mr. Pratt is seeming to have to leave to go to other meetings. No, and busy, I get it. If, maybe we could schedule these meetings, not one right on top of another to allow us to do effective business, that would be super.
So I'll talk to the administration and see if they can set the, the board chairs up with a Zoom account so that we can start the meetings. And if we need to, we can continue them without the administration, perhaps.
Yeah, in, in addition to, this is, it was just because we had to have the high school vote on the same motion of retirement as you guys did. Usually, there is no other meeting that backs up against this one, so. I'm open, I'm open to vote, well, no.
So, Mr. Terry, you had your hand up for director's comment?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion about something. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, set fiscal year twenty-twenty-one expenditure reduction to ten percent target for the administration.
I glitched out. I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
I'd like to make a motion to set.
That's not, that's not on the agenda as far as an item, so I don't know if we can do that.
Well, it could have been under upcoming considerations for twenty-twenty-one.
But we're beyond that, so we might want to put it on there for next time.
Seriously?
Hang on.
Waste more time, I'm not doing stuff.
Hang on, could Jason just repeat it without interruption? I, I didn't hear what you actually said.
I'd like to make a motion to set fiscal year twenty-twenty-one expenditure reduction target to ten percent for the administration. To have, uh, to, to, you know, start thinking about that right away.
So who is the most, uh, other than Priscilla, because I know she has her opinion, who else is up on Robert's rules and whether we can go back to an agenda item that we had after we moved on to director's comments?
Rick, you may have, you may, you may have to vote, the board to vote to go back to that agenda item and back and out of the director's.
Okay, all in favor of going back to item nine B considerations for twenty-twenty, for twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one to discuss Mr. Terry's motion? Please say, please let me know. Priscilla?
No.
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so under upcoming considerations for twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Terry?
I'd like to make a motion to set the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one expenditure reduction tempered to ten percent target for the administration.
Discussion?
I think it's gonna take a lot more discussion.
George, Priscilla raised her hand, sorry.
Yep.
I'm not understanding, I guess, and that's why I thought maybe if we put it off, we could have, we could figure out what it was ahead of, you know, ahead of time before the next meeting. But is this the, the expenditures for administration that we're paying for the administration? The administrations like.
I believe he is asking the administration to reduce their budget by ten percent.
That is correct.
Which includes what?
Everything.
Jason Terry's asking, and I think this is what you're saying, Jason. He want, bottom line, he wants to reduce the budget by ten percent and have the administration start looking at the entire budget to get it down ten percent, correct, Jason?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
To find ten percent of savings.
For, that's for twenty-twenty-one, you said?
Yes.
When do we set the twenty-twenty-one budget?
And we set it and we voted on it at town meeting. So there is a budget set, but that doesn't mean we have to, just because you have a budget, doesn't mean you have to spend it all.
Could I, oh, sorry, Priscilla's got her hand up.
Well, she spoke once, so it's your turn. We'll go back around again. Hey, George?
Would it be feasible to ask administration to put something together on where they could possibly cut and not necessarily have a, a percentage to it, as much as I'd love to see that or even more, but take a hard look at it and where could they tighten the belt a little bit?
I believe we could do that. Priscilla?
Yeah, I agree with George. I think they need, they should, should look at it and come in at the next meeting with some ideas for, for cutting it rather than our voting on, on a certain percentage.
I, I don't, I just don't want to, I want to see it cut. I mean, we have to, we have to stop, you know, we have to create that surplus the best we can. I'd like to see how, though, because I wouldn't want to approve cuts on areas where I thought were, you know, would be detrimental and yeah, I'm I'd like to, I'd like, I guess I'd like to see administration come back with, with some ideas.
Mr. Terry?
So, so my rationale for asking this is we approved a budget that was a tremendous burden to bear for us family, us families in this town. And people have lost jobs. And how, how can you ask people to continue to pay taxes when they've already lost, many people have lost jobs. There is, they're not going to be able to pay. We have to do something. We have to reduce what we are spending.
So I think for, just to be clear, because the budget has been approved and accepted by the state and someone else can correct me if, if I am completely wrong here, I think maybe Mr. Pratt and or Priscilla may know the most about how this works. Because our, our budget has been approved, the state is gonna take the money. What we might, what we would do is we would do kind of what the state's saying, this would save money that we would then apply to the following year's budget. It's not gonna reduce the current taxes, but it would reduce the following year's taxes.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the approach is that exactly what you just said, Rick.
Okay, Priscilla?
And I also point out that we have talked about a couple places that we're already saving tonight. We talked about the two positions that would be different next year that we were in that budget. So we're already starting to look at those. And if Mr. Pratt looks at some additional things and comes back to us, um, because we don't have to spend everything that's in there, as you know. And if we look at those, then we can have a better idea and maybe then we can, you know, then we could have some idea what kind of a motion we really did want. Because I think, I think Jason's idea is good. We, you know, we should look at cuts, but I don't think, I think it's premature to put a percentage on it at this point.
I don't know that it's necessarily cuts. It's reduced spending. If we don't need to spend it, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean we have to.
I think we should do both.
Areas like that and where can we strip out some costs that aren't fully necessary? I think it's important. I think we have to. I don't think two positions is gonna cut it. I think it's, you know, it's gonna take a hard look from, from the, you know, the top down.
And just so you guys know, we've already started, you know, I've already started looking, I've already started speaking with the principals. We have identified areas. We're just not ready to announce them yet because we have a little, little more time. So I didn't want anyone on the board to think that we do not have a plan. We, we have a plan. We know some areas where I am suggesting that we reduce. Um, I'm just not ready to announce them publicly yet. With some significant savings too.
If miss, if Mr. Terry is amendable, I would like to table this motion until our next meeting with the expectation that the administration is gonna come back with some ideas on where, on some ideas and some numbers of what they believe they can save.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so that motion is tabled. Finish up with director's comments while you're there, Mr. Terry?
No, I have nothing else at this time.
George? Mr. Benson?
No, nothing at this time.
Priscilla?
I think I've talked enough. I really appreciate our principals.
Please email me any agenda items that you might have for the next board meeting. We'll keep most everything that's on there, I think, we'll stay because it's a pertinent stuff we need to discuss. The date of our next board meeting will be May fourth, twenty-twenty, five thirty, same Zoom channel. The date of our next board meeting will be May fourth, twenty-twenty, five-thirty, same Zoom channel.
Hey, real quick, real quick, if there's a, in uh, a conflict of with times, um, can we all be fluid to maybe pick a Tuesday instead, if there's a additional meeting right afterwards? I don't like the feeling of being rushed.
Yeah, like I said before, this was just a uh.
No, I understand.
Well, but, you know, we'll keep an eye on it, and if ever hap-, if it happens again, I will put an email out there to see what the board wants to do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Ciao.
See you in the next bad channel.
We have to adjourn, or?
We're now adjourned.